Good evening. You are listening to WBTN Community Supported Radio. It's time now for a special edition of News and Views, coming to you live this evening from the fabulous Multi-Purpose Room, high atop the River Street Firehouse, here in beautiful downtown Bennington, Vermont. We have assembled for you this evening most of the candidates who are running for the Bennington Select Board, to my right Gene Connor and Tom Jacobs, to my left Jeannie Jenkins, Michael McDonough and Don Miller. The format of this evening's candidate forum is pretty straightforward. We have a list of questions. We will ask them one at a time. Each candidate will have two minutes in which to respond, and when we're finished with the questions, each candidate will have two minutes for closing statements. Ms. Connor will be the first candidate to answer the first question, which is, "As a candidate for the Select Board, what have you done to familiarize yourself with the real-life, day-to-day concerns of average Benningtonians?"
That's a great question. Well, first of all, I've lived here for more than 27 years, have worked in the community, I worked at the hospital, currently I work at the museum, and I'm astounded at how many people I know. I'm at events and I know generally about 85 percent of the people in the room from all walks of life. I've participated in school board work. I was on the BSD School Board for eight years. I'm currently on the Shires Housing Board. I served on the Bennington Project Independence Board, raised my family here. I'm very familiar with the school system. I walk a lot. You all probably would recognize me. I'm often out strolling around. I just feel like I have a very good sense of what Bennington is and who the people are who live here, and have a good pulse of the community.
Okay. Mr. Jacobs?
Again, great question. You know, I've lived here for a good 40 years with my family, and frankly, daily I'm astounded by the number of people that I see on the street that are always quick with a "Hi," "Hello." That's not too often you can see in many cities or towns that you live in. I've been fortunate to practice law for that number of years, and I've had a diversity of practice representing defendants and plaintiffs and landlords and tenants, so I've seen all sides of the action, as it were. What I do see, and I've had the benefit of three years and the honor of serving for three years on the Select Board, is the type of questions, the type of issues that have come before us on the agenda. It seems like no two meetings of a board of selectors is the same. People's problems seem like they come and we try to respond to them, but frankly, there's always a new problem, a new issue that comes before the board. And I'm really fortunate to have seen and had that experience. But the town of Bennington is blessed with folks that care, and I've seen a real resurgence of optimism in this community. Folks are now ready to come forward, and that's the ordinary people, not just the so-called leaders, not the naysayers, but just the person on the street that I'm really fortunate to have contacted and been in contact with and appreciated the opportunity to serve. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Jenkins?
I have worked at the community college for the last 25 years, and that has been an incredible pleasure. I've got to meet people who are coming to take classes, either to change their lives or to learn new skills, or just to have fun in learning. I've also worked a lot with employers, and I also get to work with a lot of fabulous faculty who live in this community. And that has given me incredible perspective on what the challenges and the opportunities in this community are. I also have served on a number of boards. I've served on two different school boards. I serve on a number of economic development boards and have served on boards like the Lake Perrin Board over the years. My kids went to school here, so I am very well aware of the schools, and I do attend a lot of Select Board meetings and also school board meetings, and I do watch a lot of school board meetings on CAT TV as well. So I do think that I see a lot of different issues that come up in our community, and I hear a lot from a lot of different people. And I think that has made me more aware of where we can go in this community and also the challenges that we face.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. McDonough?
Well, like my other fellow candidates, I have had the opportunity both through my professional life, the first iteration of which I've retired from, that being my architectural practice, and my current professional life being involved with Southern Mount College, and through my years of service on the Planning Commission, the Historic Preservation Commission, playing leadership roles in the Better Bennington Corporation, at the Park McCullough House, I have had also the opportunity to speak with, dialogue with, many people. I think that there was a reference to the fact that we are a caring community. We're also a passionate community, and frankly, the two things go together. And I think that for those of us who have had the opportunity to have citizens appear before us, have citizens dialogue with us, we understand, and I in particular understand, that there are many ways to look at the challenges and opportunities that we have as a community. And I think that our role, if those of us who are fortunate to serve on the Select Board, our role is to understand, listen and understand to those positions that are very passionate citizenry have, and strive for the best outcome that we possibly can.
Okay. Mr. Miller?
I think it's a way of life, being involved with the community, being interested in the community. Wherever I have been, I've been involved. I think it's also starting from humble beginnings. You are very sensitive to every step you take and what people around you are doing. When I came here, and another thing I do wherever I am, I read history. I try to figure out the historical development and evolution of the community. I particularly liked Dorothy Canfield Fisher's book on Vermont tradition, which is subtitled "A Biography of a Way of Life." I think that's very telling, and I think she comments that she knows history because she is history. We today are from the roots. And so I think it's a way of life. I think it's a way of thinking, a way of approaching life. Like everybody else, I listen to the boards and programs. I've been involved with community activities, Rotary, the Historical Society, the museum. In old Bennington, I've been the auditor, been on the Planning Commission, and I've on the trustees. So my business involves people from all walks of life. Everybody has insurance, and they all come in and we talk to all of them. So I think the idea of staying up with everybody all the time is a lifelong habit.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Jacobs will be the first candidate to answer the next question, which is, "Last year, the value of the grand list went down for the first time, at least in recent memory. If this becomes a trend, how will you, as a member of the Select Board, manage declining revenues and the ever-increasing costs of providing town services?"
You know, I beg to differ. The grand list has not gone down, hasn't gone up with the, what we would hope and anticipate, but I don't believe that the town grand list per se has gone down. We'd like to see it expand, and there is some expansion this year with some introduction of new stores in town, but the grand list is directly related to the ongoing economy and how active our community is as far as maintaining the quality of living. And I can tell you that it's obvious that we are challenged across the spectrum, both on the real estate side. My home has gone down over the years with our investment. It's still my home, wouldn't trade it for anything, but the essence of it is we've got to create a creative and innovative system so that we enhance the grand list. And I expect there will be growth, but what we would like to do is get that growth to a point where it's significant so that our tax rate will be impacted to the better, because if your grand list is weak, then your taxes will continue to grow as long, and because the services continue to be requested, we have to meet that. So I do think that there is room for improvement in the grand list. I would not say at this point that I'm overly concerned with the grand list. I'm more concerned with the tax rate and what we're getting back for our dollar.
Okay. Ms. Jenkins?
Well, this is out of my area of expertise, for sure. I would hope that we would always be looking at how to provide services in the most economical way that we can, regardless of what our grand list looks like. I think this points to a need to continue our focus on economic development, and I think it is something that I am very interested in seeing the Select Board continue to do. I think we've been proactive in the last couple of years, looking at how we grow what we have in this community, how we support it, and how we can add to it. So, you know, I think that's the place where I would want us to focus.
Okay. Mr. McDonough?
Grand list is an interesting way of measuring economic health, but I don't think it's the only way, and I would not suggest that our grand list is sinking. We do have the challenge of declining or stagnant property values. We're not alone in that. That's a national trend. And so we are, like most communities, faced with the task of doing more with not more or less, and that's an incredible challenge. I think that the Select Board and the town can be admired for the way in which they've been able to hold the line on property tax increases and provide a level of service that I think does its best to meet demand. And so I think that the real point of the topic is to ensure that we manage growth in a positive way in the community. We know that census material suggests that we have a stagnant, in some sectors, declining population. We need development and population growth to see to it that we maintain our level of standards.
Okay. Mr. Miller?
For years, communities have risen on a growing grand list, and with the bubble in 2008, the real estate and fiscal problems, things have stagnated. So it's a good question, because when things get really tight, then management gets more difficult, and you have to be sure that you have your priorities set out in terms of what the highest needs are and what ways you can use to stretch the dollars. But the ultimate answer, and I think it's a hopeful answer, is to grow that grand list again. I don't believe that a community should grow too fast. That creates pains as well, but moderate growth helps make everything else possible. And even then, when you're growing, I think you still want to manage properly so that you're not getting caught into a trap of overspending in one area, the other, and if you have another correction, you're hurting. So I think the real answer, the difficult part, is what would you do? I think we need to promote Bennington better. I think we need to sharpen our vision, articulation of our vision, our inventory of assets. What do we have to sell? Why would people buy Bennington? And we should work on bringing some more people in, some more business in, encouraging business from within and from without. I think that Bennington's a very attractive place to live and to raise families. I think people should respond if we would give them a chance, and I think that's the answer, is to go slowly and build that grand list up.
Okay. Ms. Connor?
Well, I've been hearing a lot over the last few weeks about all the amazing work that's being done in the community by the Economic Development Boards and groups that are meeting regularly, and from what I'm hearing, there are some amazing ideas that are coming out of those forums. So I see as the business community taking off with entrepreneurial endeavors and whatever else is percolating under the radar, more jobs will be developed, and people will move to town, and people will have to buy homes. It seems to me that it's going to happen somewhat naturally, and we can probably move the process along, but there seems to be some great stuff happening. As far as providing services, I can't remember that I have ever voted down a town budget. I think in general, there's an amazing process that goes on, and the Select Board is very responsible in spending our tax dollars wisely. I feel we all live here together, and we all need plowed streets, we all need clean water, and that sense of community will ensure that we have a community that we want to live in, because we live here ourselves, and we have to be invested and be mindful of what our services are costing. And again, it happens naturally. We live here together. We work together to come up with solutions. So I feel like it will happen, hopefully, somewhat naturally.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Jenkins will be the first candidate to answer the next question, which is, "Are the taxpayers of Bennington getting their money's worth from the town's Office of Economic and Community Development?"
I do think the taxpayers are getting their money's worth. I think the question is, what do we expect the Economic Development Office to be doing, or that position to be doing? I think we're in a transitional time in Bennington. We are moving away from having a few large employers that employ large numbers of individuals in this community to having smaller companies employing fewer employees and having more of those small businesses. I think this is something that's not just happening in Bennington, it's happening all over the country. I also think that it is a rough, it's a transition time, and transitions are always a little painful. So I think the idea of having a recruiter is not something that's going to help us. I think what we need is somebody who is doing exactly what Michael Harrington is doing, which is making sure that the economic development partners are coming together and that all the tools that we need to be able to work with businesses as they grow and as they ask questions about being in this community, that those tools are there for businesses to take advantage of. So, you know, I do think we will continue to refine our strategy as we understand more about what we need in this community, and that's an evolving process. But, you know, I think, as I've said before, I think the Select Board and the town and the various economic entities in this community are all starting to row in the same direction, and I think that's really important for us to make meaningful change.
Okay. Mr. McDonough?
To borrow a phrase, economic development is not a sprint, it's a marathon. And I do think that we continue to move in a positive direction. An economic development office in any community is one which, first and foremost, needs to pull together the strengths that exist within the community. I think our community development office does that. A challenge from the standpoint of the public viewpoint is that economic development is not a very public process. It's about business, and it's about entrepreneurs, and the business environment does not lend itself well to being an open book. And so I think that those of us who have had the opportunity to be involved in the economic development efforts in the community see a constant push towards trying to find elements of growth that are applicable to our community. They aren't always successful, but I think the drive is constant, and as has been said, I think ensuring that we continue to move in the same direction, including the Select Board, town management, which includes the Economic Development Office, and the other agencies and institutions which are involved in economic development, if we keep going in the same direction, we will have results.
Okay. Mr. Miller?
I believe the scorecard is still out. From the outside, I don't see the vision articulated nearly as strongly as I think it should be. If you're trying to sell Bennington, if you're trying to get people to buy Bennington, I think that there needs to be not only a clear vision, but a lot of work at it. And I've seen some videos created a year or so ago, but as far as I know, they haven't been distributed or taken anywhere. I heard at a Select Board meeting that the plan was to put them out at the visitor center, the welcome center, but that their computers were down, so it didn't happen. I'm not sure how many people come to the welcome center to make any kind of decision anyway. So I would hope that, and I think it's a relatively new effort, it's a relatively new program perhaps, having an economic development person, and I would hope that there's a learning curve and that there's greater and greater efforts to coordinate with the chamber. There's things, the chamber itself is going through a transition, and I think it's an important transition. There are a lot of things the chamber could be doing to help business and to help identify opportunities, and working with BBC, I think that's a missed opportunity there. I don't hear and see a lot of activity, but then I'm on the outside. I think that there should be packages and tools that will help local business people, and also packages that you could go and you could recruit. You could actually go places and tell the story and let people know about what we have here in Bennington. I don't get the sense that that's happening nearly as much as it should. I'd like to see more action in that area.
Okay. Ms. Connor?
Whether the taxpayers are getting their money's worth or not, I'm hesitating to pass judgment. I think, as Don just said, I'm not on the inside, so I don't know if I can say whether we are or whether or not, but what I will say is, there's a lot of buzz around town, I would say in the last year, about economic development, and I have a much clearer sense of what those entities, who those entities and boards are than I ever did, and I think that's a fantastic first step. You can't solve problems unless you're aware of them, and I think there's a lot more awareness about who the players are and what economic development could look like in Bennington, and I think that's great. I do think it's important to have a point person, and Mr. Harrington is that point person. I think there just needs to be someone kind of at the helm and who's really held accountable. So I think having him in that position, or someone in that position, is pretty crucial. I also, from what I'm hearing, the collaboration or the efforts to collaborate is new. It's something that I think is still kind of being worked out, and what the relationship's going to be, and what it's going to look like, and how they're going to work together, and that's just going to take some time, and I think the end result will certainly be positive, but it's going to take a little bit of, there's probably some growing pains possibly, and eventually, hopefully, they'll all be organized and have a clear vision and move forward together.
Okay. Mr. Jacobs?
My buzzword is synergy. We really need collaboration, working together as a community, both from the government sector and the agency sector and the citizen side. If there's anything I've learned in three years is that, you know, economic success doesn't happen overnight, and if we think that's going to happen, we're on a fool's errand, and we should just fold our tents. Not wanting to fold the tent, we're, at this point in time, starting to really start to work together, both on the public side and the private side, and we have to do that in a partnership. Private investment is not going to work without public investment. Public investment is not going to work without the private investor stepping forward. There is synergy that's starting to occur. Synergy doesn't happen overnight. Collaboration is starting, but that, again, doesn't happen overnight either. That's a work effort. A product of success is going to be realized, hopefully to some degree, within the next year to three, if I'm fortunate enough to be on the board to see it happen. But frankly, I do see that the Economic Development Office is giving more than its dollars' worth, because frankly, our investment in economic side of things has been pretty limited. We've been really not really strong on budgeting what we need on the economic development core. So frankly, I think that we're getting more than our bang for our buck, but I hope in the next three years that we're going to see the result of that energy.
Okay. Mr. McDonough will be the first candidate to answer the next question, which is, "How is poverty changing Bennington?"
Well, it isn't changing Bennington overnight, but it is impacting on our community in so many different ways. I think we all understand that there's a generational component, there's an economic development component, it impacts our educational system. There are just so many ways in which we, as a community, struggle because we have too many of our citizens, too much of our community, living on the edges and not being able to move effectively from those edges. And so I think that we have to recognize the significance of that reality in Bennington, and as we govern on a day-to-day basis, we have to do so many things, plow roads and repair sidewalks, but we have to ensure that this community is helping those citizens which struggle to be able to move forward. The change in that will not happen overnight, but we have to keep striving.
Okay. Mr. Miller?
How is poverty changing Bennington? Well, I guess we presume, and I think we can see that the middle class is hurting. We do have a large number of people who are financially stressed, and I think the main impact is in the schools, and these are all related. So then, if the schools are stretched and challenged, not only with poverty, but with challenges in special education, where there seems to be a growing population there, then it puts a strain on recruiting people here, it puts a strain on the housing, it puts a strain on our whole economy. People like to see good, positive things happening, and you can get into a cycle. So I think to the extent that poverty is increasing or even flat, it puts a strain on a community, and that goes back to the economic development of trying to not only increase the grand list and bring businesses and people, but try to do it in a fashion that helps rebuild and strengthen the middle class, so that people who are here have jobs and good jobs. and good jobs. And so you can talk about training programs and things like that, but there's no question that in it, and this is broader than Bennington, it's broader than Vermont, the economic and financial stress does put a strain on everything, from town services. We're probably not quite as affected, but from the future and the growth and the vitality, the quality of life, we need to do what we can to grow it.
Okay, Ms. Connor?
My heart is pounding because this is something that I feel pretty passionate about. Poverty impacts a town, it impacts a school, it impacts a house of worship, but the biggest impact is on the person, the actual person who is living in poverty. I'm reading a very interesting book right now by a man named Robert Putnam, and he speaks about social segregation. And he talks about how things have changed since he was a boy, growing up in Ohio in the 50s, to the present day, and how socially segregated we're now living, myself included. And the distance between the haves and the have-nots now, as opposed to the way it was in the 50s, is very, very far apart. And that's a new phenomenon. It's happened very recently, and the devastating effects that it has on parenting and education and throughout a child's life. So I think I personally need to not lose sight of that poverty isn't a thing. It's a person, it's a family, and I think we need to be very, very mindful of that, recognizing obviously it has impacts on every aspect of our lives, of our lives also.
Okay, Mr. Jacobs?
You know, I echo everyone's sentiments about this, because there's no silver magic bullet, no cure to poverty, however we attempt to define it, or it's defined for us. But I think the Select Board's job and the town government's job is to instill a sense of hope in the individual and the families that live in this town. And we can do that with an economic situation that will help. There's again, no one easy answer, but frankly, the state of Vermont is older and poorer, and we live right here where we're the, some of the oldest and some of the poorest folks in the state. So again, we don't have an easy and quick answer, but it's not something you can just say, abandon all hope ye who enter, because we're here. We're not going to enter anything because we're here as part of the solution as much as we can see the problem. And I think as far as how we deal with it, it's almost like, you know, one house at a time, and that means across the spectrum, whether it's for the individual that lives in the house, for the education of the individuals that live in the house, and for the basic needs of the individuals in the house. So I think the Select Board and the government and the citizens have to basically work together to deal with the issue that's not going to go away on its own.
Okay, Ms. Jenkins?
Well, I think, how is poverty changing Bennington? I think I would want to reframe the question. I think it's really, I think what we're really all struggling with is what do we do to increase our community wealth? And that requires not only increasing income, it also requires a change in mindset. I think it needs, we will need to move from an attitude of seeing scarcity to an attitude of seeing opportunity. And that, you know, that does mean economic development. It does mean looking at affordable and decent housing. It does mean looking at what we need to do to make our educational system the best it can be. It does mean looking at mental health services for kids from elementary school up through adults. It means that we really want to rethink how we think about what it is, what it means to be a community, and stop seeing sectors as individual parts of our community. And, you know, I think this is a great question, and I'm really happy that we are talking about poverty at this forum and what it means for our whole community to be moving forward.
Okay. Mr. Mueller will be the first candidate to answer the next question, which is, is the quality of Bennington's schools helping or hurting our economic development?
I think quality of schools is always an issue when you're trying to recruit people, whether it be individuals or businesses. I think the quality of your schools can always be better. I think the quality of our schools is pretty good right now. I think it's good enough to attract individuals and businesses. So if the question is, is it hurting? I would say we have to be better salesmen than that. We can't let it hurt our efforts to recruit individuals and businesses. There are plenty of success stories that we should be ready and willing to tell. And that said, it's something that we should always be supporting and doing what we can to help the schools do as well as they can and to improve. But I wouldn't accept the idea that they hurt. We need to get out and sell the town and sell our schools.
Okay, Ms. Connor?
The first thing I'm going to say about the quality of the schools is my kids went all through school here, and they did fantastic. They're launched, they're doing fine. They don't call and ask us for money, so that's a good thing. They're completely self-sufficient. I don't, I think we don't toot our own horns often enough and loud enough. We have an awful lot to be proud of in this town. When we compare ourselves to some of the best area high schools, our kids who graduate from MAU go to, proportionally, go to more difficult colleges. I know that's hard for people to believe, but I know someone who did the research on this, and I was surprised to hear that. A higher percentage of MAU students might not go to school, but those who do go, go to more difficult schools. We also have, I don't know if it's still true, it was true several years ago, we had more AP classes than any high school in the state. And the kids that are in the AP classes at MAU, their test scores are some of the best in the state. Those are the things that people don't know. All we tend to dwell on is the negative. We have amazing teachers, we have amazing, everyone in the schools, they're passionate about what they do. So I personally, if it's hurting us, it's our own fault, because I don't think we brag nearly enough.
Okay, Mr. Jacobs?
You know, we've got great, dedicated teachers, students that excel, and we should be proud of both. If there is anything that really sticks to this observing eye, because I'm observing, this is not my sweet spot, but frankly, in our infrastructure of our, especially our K through sixth, fifth grade, I'm sorry, is really not very attractive. And perception becomes reality of that, gee, you're not, you don't have a very good school system because the facilities aren't up to stuff. Well, frankly, you know, that's the case, and if the community had outstanding resources at its disposal, then we might create another beautiful campus. But what we do with the resources that we have are outstanding. But having said that, the situation is such that we just can't wait for things to happen. We've, we're doing well in the graduation rates. Our basketball team is going to be playing in the quarterfinals tomorrow. We're a community that has a broad brush, both in academics and in sports and the like, so we should be proud of what we have. And as Jean says, toot our horn a bit, that's one of our problems. Our self-perception sometimes is of concern. And part of that self-perception is probably the result of saying, you know, that Benell facility needs a lot of work, and we really don't want to live in that part of town because it's not as beautiful a school as it could be. But frankly, the teachers that go there every day, they give it their all, and we should be thankful and appreciative for that effort.
Okay, Ms. Jenkins?
Well, my kids also went through the school system here, and they also are doing very well. I think our school system is really closely tied to our economic development opportunities in this community. I think we can do much more than we are doing currently in the school system. I think it's very true that for the kids who do well in our schools, there are a large number of AP courses. They do extremely well on those AP courses, but I think it's a very uneven opportunity that kids have in our public school system. We do not have the mental health services that we need. We have elementary schools that are struggling to maintain their classrooms, because we do not have the mental health services in the schools that we do, that we need. We also, I think, do not always build the opportunities for kids that we could. A recent example is we had a public-private partnership between the hospital, Global Z, the Lightning Jar, and the community college, and MAU, where we encouraged kids to take advantage of the governor's institutes that happened last weekend or happening this coming weekend. We have a record number of kids that applied to the institute and also who were accepted. We had six kids accepted. That is the largest number of kids from this area who have ever attended. We can do better, and we should be doing better, to make sure that all kids have all the opportunities that they can in our school system.
Okay, Mr. McDonough?
Well, I'm a proud product of Mount Anthony and Ben Caff before that. And I know that Mount Anthony was founded on a very progressive educational base, and I think to this day, as institutions, our school system has continued that tradition. I think it's really interesting that the fifth question follows the fourth. We, our school system excels in the number and quality of young people it graduates into the world. I was fortunate to coach at Mount Anthony for 18 years. I have a sense of the students who come through that school. But our school system is challenged. It's challenged by the things that we spoke about answering the last question. I think that, given that challenge, given the challenge of our young people who need meal assistance, the high percentage of that, we're asking a school system to do a great deal. I think they do do a great deal, and I'm very proud of the young people that graduate from that system. But we have to get going down a road of removing those challenges from our citizenry and from the institutions that serve them in terms of poverty and the ability to move forward through the educational system.
Okay. Ms. Connor will be the first candidate to answer the next question, which is, does an abundance of subsidized or affordable housing help or hurt Bennington's economic development?
Are you assuming there is an abundance?
That's the question.
Well, I don't think there's an abundance, first of all. Can you repeat the question?
Does an abundance of subsidized or affordable housing help or hurt Bennington's economic development?
Okay. I don't think there's an abundance. I think there needs to be an appropriate amount of affordable housing. Interestingly, my daughter moved away when she finished college, and she's living in an affordable apartment in Ipswich, Massachusetts. I don't know what she would have done if that apartment wasn't available. She wouldn't have been able to afford to live there, which is where her job is. So I think there needs to be high-quality housing for everyone, every income level. You know, if you're lucky enough to be able to own your own home, you're probably doing great. But everyone deserves a decent, nice place to live, and whether it's affordable, you know, if it's a designated affordable housing unit, that's one thing, or if it's just having enough apartment or rental stock that's affordable, that's kind of a different question. But I guess, bottom line, I don't, I do believe everyone needs and deserves a decent place to live, and if the, and I hear all the time that there are people that are, young people especially, are looking for apartments, they're going out of state because they can't find an affordable place to live that they're willing to live in. So I think housing is a problem, and if we're trying to draw young professionals here, there doesn't seem to be enough housing for them.
Okay, Mr. Jacobs?
There is not enough affordable housing of quality in this community, and that has been proven by examination, after survey, after observation, and you can just look around the community. The essence of it is, wouldn't it be great if we lived in a community where you didn't need to be concerned about potentially assisting or propping up its citizens in some areas? But frankly, we don't live there. This is part of the fourth question. Poverty is existing here, and we are dealing with that to the extent that we can afford to within the housing sector. We don't have too much. We don't have, in that context, the right amount to deal with all of these particular issues that we've talked about tonight. But we've got to deal with the reality of this is today. What we have to do is make sure that affordable, quality housing exists for every citizen in this town.
Okay, Ms. Jenkins?
Well, I also agree that we absolutely should have subsidized and affordable housing that is of high quality in this community, and that we absolutely need more of it. If one looks, if one talks to any young professional that moves to this community, the number-one challenge is finding affordable housing. And if you talk to anyone who works at the front desk of any company you walk into, that individual is more than likely looking for affordable housing. This is not a, this is not a poverty issue. This is a, this is a community issue that we should all be looking to make sure that the housing stock we have is of high quality, that we take advantage of energy efficiency, that we make sure that we are not going to be driving young professionals out of our community because they cannot find a place to live and still be able to afford, you know, the amenities of being in the community.
Okay, Mr. McDonough?
I think the question suggests the existence of an unfortunate mindset. The true way to restate the question or to make the statement is that the lack of affordable housing in our community hurts economic development. It's not that having affordable housing hurts economic development. Everyone has suggested that we have a deficiency, and we do. And it crosses all income levels. And if you analyze the ability of businesses in this community to attract employment, to attract workers, the, one of the principal challenges that they face, and that the people looking for those jobs face, and that the need to import people to our community to fill some of those jobs is the lack of appropriate affordable housing. And so we know that this has been a challenging issue for the community. This community spent a great deal of time debating the subject of affordable housing. Unfortunately, I think the debate was misplaced, and I hope that moving forward, we are able to get beyond the negatives of the debate that occurred and move positively.
Okay, Mr. Mueller?
Subsidized housing and affordable housing are not necessarily the same thing. I thought- I thought I heard in the question, more emphasis on subsidized housing, does it help or hurt? I'm not sure if I like the question that much either. I think there's a role for subsidized housing. I don't think every housing should be subsidized. In other words, I think you have to figure out how much does any one community need? And that may change depending on the economic realities. We are, as we said earlier, in an economic downturn we're trying to come out of. And, and so in this role, certainly, there's room for subsidized housing, and it helps. It doesn't hurt, it helps. Affordable housing, to me, is a lot broader than that. And I mentioned the middle class before. I think we need to do a lot in our housing stock to help upgrade it and to help maintain it. When the economy is tough, it's tough for everybody to maintain the houses the way they want to. I'm not sure that all income groups are equally on the short end here. I think there's a lot of, there are a lot of houses on the market that are not selling. That means they're available. It's not a lack of homes in some of the sectors. It's a lack of people coming to buy them. So I think that goes back to the need to promote the town, to, to bring people here, to give them reasons to come here, and then the housing stock, as it gets filled, and, you know, everything will rise. So I, I think you need a blend of housing stock, and I think that subsidized part, housing is part of it, affordable. Everybody needs affordable, no matter how much money you have, you, you want to afford something else. So I think that's relative.
Okay. Mr. Jacobs will be the first candidate to answer the next question, which is, is it a conflict of interest for a member of the Select Board to also be a member of the Better Bennington Corporation's Board?
No. That's my answer. I know a conflict when I see one. There is no conflict. The Better Bennington Corporation, the other agencies and volunteer organizations around town survive only through the effort of, of folks that participate as members or volunteers. And frankly, if we don't become members of these agencies and add to their vitality, then we might as well fold our tents. There is no conflict for someone on the Select Board to participate as a member of an organization when he or she has no personal gain. The town is the beneficiary of that exercise. It's not the individual. I don't understand why there is some concern in that in certain quarters, other than to say that maybe they should read a little further into the conflict law and the definition of it, because conflict means you get a personal benefit. And I can tell you, as a member of an organization, as a board member, you're providing a community support on all levels, and I suggest that we have to continue. We're a small community, and when we lose the members, the volunteers, then we're not going to be very vital.
Okay, Ms. Jenkins?
Well, I think that transparency, honesty, and doing what is in the best interest of the community is what we have to be able to do on a board. And I think that one needs to think very carefully about conflicts of interest, both perceived and real. I would certainly want to be able to hear people's opinions, whether they are on boards or not. I also would want to be able to express my opinion, whether I'm on a board or not. I've thought about this question quite a bit, because I am currently president of the Better Bennington Corporation. I also sit on the Bennington County Economic Development Partners. Bennington Economic Development Partners also sit on the Bennington County Industrial Corporation. I also am on the Energy Committee, which is an advisory board for the Bennington County Regional Commission. I also sit on a private school board. And so on one, in one hand, you want, you want the community to be involved, you know? You want people that are, that are on the Select Board to know what's going on in a community. So I don't know, I don't know what my final thoughts are on this, but I, I think it's something we want to pay attention to. But unless we want members of boards to step off of all other boards they're on, it's really hard in a community this size to, 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 to be able to untangle yourself from all connections.
Okay, Mr. McDonough?
I can only suppose that the question is a directed one, and there's no secrets here. Both the fellow candidate who just spoke and myself serve on the Better Bennington Corporation Board of Directors. One of us is the current president. One of us is the vice president and successor to the current president. I, I share in the belief that we have a wealth of valuable people in this community who give of themselves in countless ways. And I think that to impugn their commitment to the community by suggesting that they, their, their motives are somewhat questionable, I, I, I think is really sad. Now, I do believe that, and I've, I've served on, I serve on a state board, I've served on many local boards, as I said, I serve on the Planning Commission. There are issues in times when a person has to respect the question of legal definition of conflict of interest and perception of conflict of interest. But I, I think that anyone who is seeking the responsibility that all of us are seeking understands that and, and understands that, that we're not doing this for personal gain, we're doing this to, to give of ourselves to the community.
Okay, Mr. Miller?
A conflict of interest is, is a very important and a very broad, broad topic. I, I'd like to hear more about it with regard to the Select Board and the BBC, but when we're thinking about conflict of interest appearances and perceptions are very important, transparency is very important. My basic understanding of conflict of interest is that it usually has something to do with monetary advantage. And I don't see any monetary advantage for members of the board, of the BBC. I think we, it is important to encourage people to participate, to give back to the community, and, and, and so we only have so many people. If they're on multiple boards, does that always create a conflict? I don't think so. What I think is more important in this kind of a situation, and I believe the BBC is basically an extension in, in some ways of the, the town government. It fulfills, helps fulfill some of the charter obligations of, of the town to help improve the downtown. So if, if it's almost an extension, we should be working together, but there should be accountability. There should be review, there should be measurement of the BBC by the Select Board or whoever the superior is to make sure that whatever they are doing is meeting their goals. There should be goals, there should be scorecard, it should be measured. And I'm not sure how much that's being done or how well it's being done. I'm not sure that it's a conflict of interest situation. I think some overlap and some representation can be good.
Okay, Ms. Connor?
Well, I'm not a lawyer, but my friend Tom here is. And if he says there's no conflict, then I'm gonna go with what he says. And I, you know, we all know, we've all been on boards, if there's a need to recuse yourself from a specific vote, then you recu, you recuse yourself. I would think that the more knowledge that a Select Board member comes on a board with, that would be a good thing, not a, not a bad thing. So that's all I'm gonna say, I'll save us some time.
Okay. Ms. Jenkins will be the first candidate to answer the next question, which is, are you in favor of the local option tax in Bennington? If so, would you earmark the additional revenue for any specific uses?
I don't know where I come down on this, at this point. It would certainly bring more, it would bring more money into the community. It also increases the cost of doing business in this community. So, you know, I think, I think it's an issue that I would like to hear more about how it plays out for members of the community. Does it tend to, does it tend to increase the cost of living here in a way that actually does not work for the common good? So, so I don't know where I would come down on that, and I don't know, and I have, and thus I have no idea of what I would want to earmark that money for.
Okay. Mr. McDonough?
I think there are certainly communities in our state that utilize and benefit from a local option tax. However, consumption taxes are regressive, and they, they, they put additional burden on those who live in our community who are challenged with meeting those burdens. I, I think that I'll dare cite a couple of communities, and I can't be certain whether they both have a local option tax, and I believe they do, but communities such as Stowe or Manchester, one could certainly see that there is a gain in a 1% local option tax. Other communities in the state that, that struggle with the poverty that we have talked about, I think would have to take a hard look at whether a local option, option tax served our community. One would have to look at the amount of money that would be generated and the impact that that tax would have on people and their daily lives.
Okay, Mr. Miller?
I guess I would agree that it requires some study. I don't know what studies have been done and what examples have been done. And, and it's always a trade-off of, of more tax can sometimes, if, if the tax goes too high, it, it actually curtails activity. But my, my feeling at this point would be that it would be, should be encouraged when you're, you're in a more of a urban area, if, if we can call Bennington an urban area, more, more concentrated population than rest of the state, or much of the rest of the state, then you, you, you do have different dynamics than if you're in a small town out in the middle of nowhere. So I, I think that you can bear, I think in general, you can bear a little more tax, you also, you have more services, and, and somehow you have to pay for that. And it's not easy news, it's not happy news, but we're talking about it being in an economy where, where things are tight, then I think you have to look at where can you raise revenue without, with a minimal amount of hurt to most people. And I think that's probably gonna fit into that category, that that would work for a while.
Okay, Ms. Connor?
This is actually something I'd never even thought about, so the things that came to mind as I was thinking about this and listening to what the others were saying are, I, I, I'm thinking about it more comprehensively, what would be taxed? And we don't know that now, but what would be, what items, if it's, you know, something you buy at the store, whether it's luxury items, whatever, what would be taxed? And based on that, who's gonna bear the burden of whatever that, however, however the tax is being generated? So that would be kind of critical to me on making a decision whether I would agree or not. And would the money that was generated, who's that gonna benefit? Is it gonna benefit everyone? Is it a targeted group of people? To me, I would need to know more about that, whether, to decide whether I would be in favor of it or not. But I guess, in my gut, I generally find it distasteful. I can't quite pinpoint why, but it just doesn't feel right to me on a gut level.
Okay, Mr. Jacobs?
You know, the local option tax has been used as a vehicle to raise funds that you would normally not get. And it's been mostly used in the gold towns, those that have got the benefit of the tourists coming and going, the transients, that basically are one-stop-pop and get your rooms and meals, and that 1% generates a lot of income for those towns. Now, I'd love to have another $700,000 for the Select Board and the town to work with to reduce taxes and do a lot of those things. But if it comes at the expense of the citizens who are struggling day-to-day just to pay what they need to pay, and, and they lose that opportunity, then I think we have to, you know, take a step back and decide whether or not this has any degree of attractiveness, that it's, if the $700,000 is coming from the, the folks who come through and, and abide and use our, our services, then I think that's great. But if the, it's coming on the backs of our taxpayers, citizens, then I think we really have to look close whether or not this is an option, because frankly, we're not a gold town. And so I'd hate to get us into a situation where we cut off our noses by their face. And I'm not against or opposed in looking at it, just to see what in fact might be available that would be beneficial to the town and its citizens, but not coming at the expense of the citizens.
Okay. Mr. McDonough will be the first candidate to answer the next question, which is, if you are involved in hiring the next town manager, what qualities and qualifications will you look for in making your choice?
Well, a town manager has obviously a number of, of roles and responsibilities, but there are two principal ones. One is the development of a budget with the assistance of, assistance of the department heads and managers that work under the town manager. And the second is maintaining the right balanced relationship with the employees and the unions of our community. Those are two incredibly important tasks. And so I would want a person who understands the, the challenges of developing municipal budgets, and then by extension, living with and utilizing those budgets, and a manager who has the ability and the skill to manage our, our municipal employees and the unions in which they work. Now, I think that another important point for a manager is that they surround themselves with skilled expertise in the specific areas that are necessary for, for our community. Economic development, we've talked about a great deal. Recreation, the, the management of our water and wastewater systems, our highways, our police department. Those hires are all critically important, and the manager needs to be skilled in that as well.
Okay, Mr. Miller?
Each year, government gets more technical and more complicated. I would think experience would be a, a very important factor. I'd start from the bottom of the resume and wonder if perhaps they had some formal education in public administration. Some good schools out of Albany that do this. I'd like to see them have some practical experience as an assistant or in a smaller town. I don't think there's any substitute for having hands-on experience. When you think of all the things a town is involved with, from maintenance, the water department, the roads, people, the unions, it, it takes somebody who can multitask, somebody who's good with budgets and numbers, somebody who can work with the legislative and regulatory environment. So they have to have the smarts, they have to have people skills, they have to be good manager of time and, and things like that. manager of time and, and things like that. It's probably, again, something where you, we need somebody with more experience, not less, and, but I'd keep an open mind, because some people have those human charismatic qualities that allow them to, to cut through and, and get to the, to the bottom line quicker than others. So, I, I think it's an, it's gotta be an open process, but you're really looking for experience and expertise.
Okay, Ms. Connor?
I guess, obviously, I think it sort of would go without saying that you would want someone who knows the nuts and bolts of what being a town manager is, budgeting, highway, department, safety, you know, all of that stuff, that's a given. I tend to be someone who looks for personality traits. I feel like you can learn just about anything, but you can't really change your personality. So, for me, I think someone who's creative and, and is a good collaborator and willing to listen and work with people and come up with interesting solutions, and not be such a methodical person, but, but be a little bit more dynamic in the way they think, that's the kind of person that I see could be very successful here. Experience would be wonderful, obviously, also, but I, I really feel like a really good look at the person's personality and how they would, would fit in with the culture here and, and the work, the, the departments that they would have to be collaborating with, I think is key.
Okay, Mr. Jacob?
Town government is like any other business. The town manager is really the CEO, chief executive officer, and basically executing the decisions of the Select Board. Fortunately or not, the town manager also is the chief operating officer, so he or she would wear two hats almost simultaneously. I think the word experience is important. I don't think it's understated because of the complexity of town governments today, but I would hope that that individual, he or she, would come with traits of recognizing that she or he is going to be basically the face of government, somewhat the face of our community, that folks could look to and respect as far as their leadership. There are a lot of tasks that go along with the role. The best CEO is one that surrounds herself or himself with strong support staff, and they're not gonna be successful until and if they have that. So, I would look to someone that has both the apparent ability to pick a good team and to, to run with it. So, it's a big job. It's not something that you can just say someone on the street can handle it. There are just too many issues that are ongoing, both in the economic side and just operation of, of a community. So, you're the CEO and the chief operating officer, all under one hat.
Okay, Ms. Jenkins?
Well, it is a big job, and I think that it has been covered pretty thoroughly by everyone that has spoken before. Clearly, you need to be able to develop and manage a budget. Clearly, you need to be an excellent communicator. You need to surround yourself with good people and listen to them. I would certainly want someone who had experience and had a strong educational background in the area, and someone who would, who likes this community and really wants to take the time to get a pulse on the community. I think it's really important for the town manager to be someone who is aware of the issues that are, that are percolating up, and to be one of the people who is making sure that the Select Board is knowing of issues as they arise. So, I think experience, communication, and then just the administrative skills, which are pretty massive that one needs to, to be in this position, would be things I would definitely be looking for.
Okay. This concludes the question and answer portion of this evening's candidate forum. Each candidate will now have two minutes to offer some closing statements, beginning with Mr. Miller.
Well, I believe in Bennington, it's, it's past, it's present, and it's future. I think we need to be positive about that. There are challenges, there are some tremendous challenges. We refer to them, many of them are economic, the schools and whatever. But we need to be proactive in preserving who we are and, and, and what we have as we move forward. If we move forward together, collaborating, then we can achieve results, we can, we can make progress, we can work our way out, and we can attract individuals, and we can attract businesses to Bennington, and that, that's part of solving that grand list problem. I don't think we're looking for a flood of people, but I think I would expect a modest growth. I think my experience as a tax and investment advisor for small business has helped me develop some analytical skills and some marketing skills and, and some consensus-building skills, which I think of what you apply when you're creating a marketing plan and you're trying to get that vision out there, you're trying to make sure you understand your resources and, and what you have to sell, you put that plan in place, and then you implement it, and that's where we're short. We do, we do a lot of brainstorming, but we need to actually get proactive about getting the story out and selling Bennington and, and being positive to that end.
Okay, Ms. Connor?
Well, I said it the other night, I'm honored to be here with all the other Select Board candidates. It's been, it's been a really interesting and fun process, being interviewed and answering questions. I've been thinking about doing this for a long time, and being able to campaign with my friend Jeannie down there was what tipped the scales for me. It's been a really wonderful experience. I feel like I know the community really well, lived here a long time, been very involved the entire time we've lived here. I'm a person of passion. I'm very willing to speak up and express my opinions, and I'm also very willing to ask questions when I don't understand something, or if I don't feel like I have enough information. I like making decisions after a lot of thought and having all the, all the, all the information in front of me and having a clear understanding of the issues. I desperately want everyone in this community to benefit from the work that the Select Board does. I think we all live here together, and we all need to benefit from decisions that, that we make as a board. I know the learning curve for me is steep. I've worked in mostly not the not-for-profit world, so I have a lot to learn if I am so lucky to be on this, be, win a seat on the Select Board, but I'm ready to dig in and learn. And I wanted to just quickly announce that Jeannie and I are having an event tomorrow night at Bringing You Vermont. If anyone out there is listening, we're gonna be there from 5:30 to 7:30, so come and tell us what's on your mind. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Jacob?
Thank you, Robert. First, I want to thank you, the moderator, for doing an excellent job, and WBTN and Cat TV, Timekeeper is outstanding. And especially thank my colleagues up here. You know, this is the best part of why people serve and want to serve, it's to get energized, re-energized, and participate in the democratic process. Any three individuals that you've heard tonight would be more than adequate to continue what I see the Select Board having already started. A lot of what we've done, as many of you that have come to our meetings know, our work's in progress. We haven't hit the finish line, but I, frankly, I'm asking for your vote so that I can be there when we get to the finish line with one, two, three, or more of the projects. Again, I thank you for your time, many times patience with yours truly, and hope to be able to serve you again.
Okay, Ms. Jenkins?
Well, I love this community, and I would really love to be on the Select Board. I think we have such great opportunities in economic development. We have a new air of collaboration in this community and in the region, and I really want to be part of taking advantage of that. I mean, we're not only looking Northshire, Southshire, but we're also looking across southern Vermont, we're looking toward Albany, we're looking south to Pittsfield. I think there's quite an energy, and it's something that we really want to build on. I am always happy that we are a community of colleges rather than a college community here, and I think the educational institutions, particularly post-secondary, are things that we need to get everybody in this community involved in. We've got six colleges and a tech center, and there are lots of ways that, as a community, we can support, we can support those institutions and have those institutions support us more. And then I think, I, I really want to see us focusing on middle school to young professionals in this community. We have an opportunity to hold on to the youth that we have and to bring more in, and that, you know, that's a challenge and an opportunity, and I think it's something that we are ripe to do, and I really would like to be part of that. I want to echo Jean's, Jean's comment, we are holding an event at Bringing You Vermont on Main Street tomorrow night at 5:30, and we would love to hear your comments and what's on your mind. So, please do stop by. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. McDonough?
I sit here with two minds tonight, and some of you may have noticed my glance at my phone once in a while. I, I'm a passionate candidate for our Select Board. I'm also the director of athletics at Southern Mount College, and there is a battle of number one versus number two going on, on our campus right now in men's basketball. Now, why, why do I even tell that story? I, I think that as Benningtonians, we go about our daily lives missing all the wonderful things that happen on a daily basis in this community, whether it's having one of the top New England basketball teams competing in our town on this evening, or whether it's having the opportunity to visit John Wright Dolls over the weekend and see the, the amazing worldwide-class products that are turned out by that business. Or going to any one of the wonderful restaurants we have in this community and, and seeing restaurants grow in our community. I, if there's a message that I'd like to send is, stop and realize what a wonderful gift we have, and make the most of it. And I urge everyone to play their part Tuesday and vote.
Okay, well, that's going to wrap it up for this special edition of News and Views this evening here on WBTN. We'd like to thank Cat TV for partnering with us this evening. We'd like to thank the town for the use of the hall. And of course, we'd like to thank all the candidates, not only for being here with us this evening, but for their willingness to run for office, their willingness to serve in office. It is difficult and thankless work, and they are all to be commended. On Tuesday, vote for the candidates of your choice, but vote. We now return to WBTN's regularly scheduled program of fine music. Good night, and have a pleasant tomorrow.